It's 6:01. I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of December 7, 2023 to order.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good, you're sure?
Can we begin with the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hector Garcia, Rolando Casares.
Present.
Mike Barone. Manolo Ranke.
Present.
Johnny Narvais.
Present.
Yushin Wang. Regina Portillo.
Present.
Daniela Salapas.
Here.
Adolfo Martinez.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have more. Thank you. Can I have a motion to excuse those members that are not present today? I make a motion to excuse the members not present.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the common purpose which is one nation under a individual liberty and justice.
Moving on now to the consider approval of minutes of the regular meeting of November 16, 2023.
Motion to approve minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens' comments, general comments?
At this time, we do not.
Going to open up the public hearing, move on to public hearing recommendation of an ordinance, item 6A. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 1, Block 1104, Western Division, located at 120 Houston Street from B1, Limited Business District to B3, Community Business District.
Can you come in for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Eva Estrada and Juan R. Estrado, the owners. Eva Estrada is the applicant. Property description is Lot 1, Block 1104, Western Division, located at 120 Houston Street. The zone change request is a B1 to a B3. Proposed use is car lot. Letter sent were 22, 4, 0, against 1. Background: On August 18 of 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the proposed zone change. However, staff was in support of the proposed zone change. An appeal there must be submitted within 30 days of the commission's decision to move forward to the City Council. However, a letter appealing the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission was not submitted. Therefore, the application did not move forward to the City Council. This is location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Hilarious. Staff recommendations, staff support of proposed zone change. And the proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before we open the public hearing, the question of the last meeting was whether this applicant was legal nonconforming. Most people call it grandfathering. We had the zoning officers look into it and do the research, and they were not able to find any information that would have her business open before, I believe it was 1984?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. So what you have in front of you, the zone change from B1 to B3, is what's in front of you as far as to vote on. But yes, the legal nonconforming is not there.
It's not there. And that was a reason for it to be tabled to find out whether it was...
We were trying to see if maybe that was the case, but it wasn't.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I will allow three people to speak on each side, whether it's for or against. If there's more than three people that want to speak, if someone can just designate somebody to come up and speak, whether you're for or against, I'm going to open up for those who are in favor. Please come forward.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Eva Estrada y mi negocio está por 120 Houston, Ramón Estrada Auto Sales. Y he estado tratando de cambiar de zona mi negocio, ya que el Estado me pide que ahora sea B3 en vez de B1. Para ello yo necesito el certificado de ocupancia. He estado viniendo y hay gente a favor, gente no a favor. La razón es porque hay mucho tráfico, mucho ruido, y que no respetan los parqueaderos de cada uno. Entonces yo me daba la tarea de estar caminando todas esas cuadras a pie y tomando fotos con mis celulares para ver qué es lo que está pasando, por qué la gente se queja. Y me he dado cuenta que el tráfico empieza a las 7:15 y se acaba a las 9:30. Hoy mismo hice un video en vivo a las 9:37 y se ve muy despejado todo ahí. Con el mismo video veo a las personas por la calle La Victoria, La Matamoros y La Houston, que todo mundo sale a sus trabajos. Como en La Victoria hay cinco negocios y todo mundo sale, y para las 8:00, 8:30 ya se fueron todos y la calle se queda despejada. No he visto ni he tomado ninguna fotografía que alguien esté bloqueando una entrada. Yo veo muy despejado. Llegamos a la calle Houston y veo que se despeja, pero de repente sube y baja. Y me di la tarea de caminar todas esas cuadras y me di cuenta que no hay semáforos. El semáforo que hay está a seis cuadros de diferencia. Entonces cuando el semáforo de la zandarío se para, todo ese tráfico se para. Cuando se mueve, se mueve. Y toda la gente que pasa por ahí en la tarde se regresa por La Matamoros. Y me di cuenta caminando que La Matamoros no tiene ese problema. Entonces me di cuenta que La Matamoros tiene sincronización de semáforos y hace que el tráfico esté a más fluido. Entonces no se ve la diferencia, no se ve ese mismo fenómeno del otro lado que de este lado, pero no tenemos señalamientos. Por la calle Victoria también me di cuenta que se quejaban que a veces entraba tráfico pesado. Y yo me di la tarea de caminar ahí. Nomás hay un anuncio de este tamaño que no puede entrar ahí el tráfico pesado. Es lógico que la gente se equivoque y se vaya por ahí. Yo entiendo que borrar mi historia se me hace injusta, pero también las otras personas también tienen derecho. Entonces yo vengo a proponer una solución. No tengo problema por juntarme con alguien, juntar firmas con ese mismo entusiasmo que veníamos y solicitar más anuncios, más señalamientos y semáforos, porque del otro lado lo hay. No veo yo por qué de este lado no tiene que haber para agilizar ese tráfico. Por ahí pasa todo el 83, todo el 359 y todo el 59 para alcanzar aquí el área del centro, la Escuela San Pedro y el 35 o el Puente Internacional. Es todo. Yo veo que Laredo se mantiene de trailers, de bodegas, de agencias de autos, y es todo lo que tenemos. Por qué no tenemos casinos, no tenemos parques de diversiones. Es una entrada de dinero también todos esos carros que circulan por ahí. Y la solución, yo pienso que está en el mismo barrio, de pedir que haya más agilidad de tráfico por ahí. El departamento de Austin ya me mandó una carta, la traigo ahí en presencia, y ya nomás me da para el 10, para el 10 de diciembre, decir si voy a poderles mandar el certificado de ocupancia o no, y si no, el 15 de diciembre, que ya cierre mi negocio. Yo traigo muchos, muchas fotografías aquí. Tengo 29 días desde la última audiencia que yo vine, y yo veo que todo el tráfico se va entre las 9:30 y 9:45. Es lo que se va. Y yo no veo que nadie estorbe. Si llega, gente se estaciona, se bajan, y se ve que se van para los trabajos. Pero es un movimiento que es normal en una calle, que es una vía de despoje por ahí. Yo les pido que, por favor, rectifiquen su posición, y les doy el tiempo, por el tiempo y el espacio que me han dado para expresarme. Gracias.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Yo quería saber, ¿su negocio es el auto de carros?
Sí, es un auto de carros.
Y nomás tengo varias preguntas. Enfrente, enfrente se ve, en el, ¿cómo se llama?
En el mapa?
En el overhead.
En el zoning map?
No, en el que está aquí.
The aerial.
The aerial. Ah, no. Se ve enfrente. Enfrente de usted, ¿qué hay? ¿Son oficinas?
No, son departamentos.
Pero ellos tienen sus propios parqueaderos. Sí, es... nada más. Entonces los de enfrente son departamentos.
Enfrente hay...
Y enfrente hay un negocio.
Hay un lote de carros que él sí es B3 y ya ya renovó su licencia también.
Okay. Y entonces usted tiene ahorita un B1 y está solicitando el B3.
Sí, porque la ciudad me lo cambió, el Estado de Austin me lo cambió por la sanción.
Señora Estrada, ¿puede manejar su negocio con una conditional use permit, una permiso de condicional, o tienes que tener la zona B3 para...?
El Estado me pide el certificado de ocupancia y el zoning plan no me lo quiere dar a solo que sea zona B3. Si no, ya lo hubiera concedido desde cuándo, pero ellos quieren un B3. Antes me decían que porque tenía yo 35 años ahí, que podía calificar por mi antigüedad, pero me piden registros de minutos 82, que eso equivale a 40 años para atrás. Y yo estoy desde el 88, 89. Y aparte, demostrarles, les demostraría con 10, 12 años para atrás. No tengo de 30, 35 años para atrás documentos.
El Estado está pidiendo el certificado de ocupancia.
Sí, pide el certificado de ocupancia o no me da la licencia.
So in that case, she needs a certification of occupancy. Would a conditional use permit be appropriate in this situation? Would that give her her certificate of occupancy if she applies?
It's her choice if she wanted to apply for a conditional use permit. I'm not sure as far as the state's concerned if it must be a complete zone change or if a condition, an overlay over that zone can happen. So I'm not sure about that. I would say that as far as changing a zone, she does have that option if she wanted to do it. I'm just not sure what the state requires.
El permiso que está queriendo el Estado, ahorita no está trabajando, el negocio no está operando, ¿o sí está operando?
Puedes quedar aquí enfrente, por favor.
A condición de lo que te están pidiendo.
Vine el año pasado para irme preparando, porque ya me lo había anticipado el Estado, que ya iba a referir eso. Entonces se me venció en mayo 31 de este año. De aquí para acá estoy en el aire.
Estás en el aire.
Estoy, que sí, que no, que quieren saber si voy a poder hacerlo o no. Y ya nomás me dan de límite.
Ya no estás operando.
No. Entonces me dan de límite nada más. El 10 para decirle si voy a poder o no con el certificado, y el 15 para que ya dé de baja mi licencia. Y traigo la carta físicamente.
Los carros en venta, ¿dónde los estaciones?
No, ahorita no tengo carros en venta. Nomás tengo dos carros, porque no he podido comprar nada, y los tengo en mi casa. No los puedo tener en el lugar.
Okay. And when you have them, if you have the permission, where would you stop them?
Están dentro de mi propiedad. Es una propiedad muy grande, porque son terrenos de los antiguos, y yo no manejo mucho carro. Si algo le prende a mi padre y a mi abuelo, es que, ¿para qué quería tener diez carros? Siempre me decía, son puras garantías. Con cuatro que vendas te ganas diez carros. Mis carros son carros muy nuevos.
¿Y los clientes se estacionan adentro o afuera?
Se estacionan adentro. Y por lo general, hoy en día se usan mucho las redes sociales que me dicen, ven, trámelo para verlo. Y yo voy y se los llevo, porque pues es trabajo y es dinero. Yo voy hasta allá, se los llevo, se los enseño. Y si tengo que firmar un papel, yo voy hasta su trabajo y me lo firman.
¿Cuántos espacios caben ahí para el estacionamiento? ¿Cuántos espacios caben?
No, ahí fácil caben 30 carros.
Gracias.
Just for clarification, she did say that she needs a certificate of occupancy for the state. So whether she gets a zone change or she gets a conditional use permit, that would get her a certificate of occupancy that she could then...
She just needs a CO.
It's just the CO that she needs. That would get her.
Right. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone in favor?
Sino básicamente lo mismo del negocio, que lo queremos convertir en B3 para poder seguir trabajando. Eso es la principal, ¿verdad? No les estorbamos a nadie, no ocupamos lugares de fuera, no ninguna calle de afuera que usamos nosotros. Y sí hay gente por La Victoria, ¿verdad?, que tiene trailers. A lo mejor eso dice la gente, ¿verdad? Pero nosotros en particular no estacionamos ningún carro afuera. Tenemos lugares suficientes para estacionarlo.
Joven, ¿su nombre?
Juan Estrada.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? How about against this item? Anyone wish to speak against this item?
Just for clarification, when I said about the CUP, they would have to pass the building inspections and everything to comply before they get a CO.
Good evening, honorable members of the PNC Commission. My name is Guadalupe Cepeda. I own a property on the 200 block of Victoria. I am against the rezoning, and the reason being is that the street that she's on, which is San Leonardo, the corner of San Leonardo and Houston, it is a very small street. So when I walk out to get to work, the business, which is Global Technologies on the other side, has his business vehicles and customers there, and then she has her customers on the other side. There's times you cannot get out through San Leonardo. My concern is there's a lot of senior citizens in our area. I'm afraid the ambulance is not going to be able to get through, or the fire department, through San Leonardo or San Enrique. We have several used car lots in the area. We have one across the street. We have one in Matamoros. And then we have the apartment complex, and then we have the business on Houston. So my concern is that if we need special help or emergency help, they will not be able to come through, through San Leonardo and Victoria. And yes, I see her point that after working hours, it's not clear because nobody has a carport in that area. It's a very, very old residential district, and the majority of the houses parked outside. So I'm against it. Thank you for your time.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who else who wishes to speak against this item?
Tengo una pregunta para usted, señora Estrada.
La señora dice que en eso es puramente residencial, y yo quería preguntarle a ella si sabe por su calle Victoria. Cuántos negocios, precisamente por su calle Victoria. Yo lo caminé. Hay dos constructores, hay dos autopartes, hay un plomero, y hay un huelleador. Hay seis negocios ahí, y todo mundo sale y se va. Queda disponible fácilmente, porque ahí a media cuadra de mi negocio está el fire department, y pasa la ambulancia como si nada. Yo le he visto que pasa por un lado. Ahora, a mí mis clientes no se estacionan por afuera, porque para empezar tengo seis, ocho meses que ni siquiera he podido abrir.
Señora, tengo una pregunta. Otra opción que puede tener es sacar un permiso condicional, que le da permiso a manejar su propio negocio y que te pueda dar su certificado of occupancy. ¿Es algo que ustedaría hacer en lugar de cambiar la zona, o quieres la zona B3?
La zona B3, porque el Estado no me requiere otra cosa. No me da opciones el Estado. Ese es el problema que tengo, ¿no? Yo si no, ya lo hubiera hecho desde cuándo.
¿Ellos específicamente te dijeron B3?
Ellos...
¿O te dijeron necesito un certificado?
Un certificado de ocupancia, pero el problema es que en el planning department no me lo quieren dar, si no son B3. Porque ya les he dicho que qué opciones y qué puedo hacer y todo, y no. Dicen que tiene que ser B3.
En el building department, no en el plan.
En el planning.
It's in the same building.
Yeah.
It's a building.
Can I have a motion to close public hearing and open up for discussion?
Motion to close public hearing and open discussion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes. Well, I do have a question for staff. Did we get any notes or any impact analysis from the traffic department about this area?
No, we did not.
Did we request it from them?
No, we did not. It's not normally something that we...
Is it something we could do in this particular case since traffic is the main concern of the area?
We could ask them, I mean, as a zone change, we really don't work on that part. When they come in for their building or for their CO, they'll be inspected, they'll have to meet whatever the building department needs, including talking to some of the different departments. But it's not normal for us to ask for a traffic study for a zone change.
Not necessarily a traffic study, but I guess just their take on this area. Even for a CUP, is it something that like procedurally we could request from them just for this case?
So with a CUP, it gives you a chance to, maybe you have some concerns that you would like to address. You can make it a condition, and that way they have to comply with that condition in order to receive the overlay. So that helps if you have any concerns that you want to work on. If you do a B3, straight up B3, then it's by right, and then they can do whatever they need to do on a B3. Of course, going through the building department, making sure they pass all their inspections. But the conditional use permit is a mechanism to possibly allow for a business to be there, but with certain conditions that might make this commission or the council a little bit more, you know, relaxed or whatever.
And would it be, like hypothetically, would it be possible that we, that the city impose a restriction on whether they can park, whether their clients can park on the street on San Leonardo?
Well, it's a city street, and people can park on a city street. So it'd be difficult to say your customers can't. Now, are they required? They might be required by believing to have parking spaces for clients. But if a client chooses to just park on the street and walk over and check out the cars, it's difficult for us to, you know, tell them not to do that, because that's a choice of that person.
I guess, is it possible in terms of, like, if the traffic department deemed that street to be too narrow for ambulances or fire engines, that the traffic department is able to do something about, you know, if it's too congested in that particular street?
I would think that, yeah, that's where I was going to go with it. If they deem that, they might go in there and maybe create a no parking zone on one side of the street and, you know, eliminate that parking completely to try to make space. But that would be the traffic department to kind of go through that. But that's an option they could come up with.
Would have to get to that point, like of extreme congestion for the traffic department to come in.
And we don't know if by doing that, it might answer one thing, but it might hurt because people might need that parking space. So if we make that whole block a no parking zone, it could, you know, we could have a problem there, too. So it's...
And that permit can come after, even post-approval.
Sure, at any time, the traffic department could just do the process.
Applying the whole businesses and homes around that area, so...
I think the main issue is that she hasn't been able to operate her business in eight months, right? And she wants to be in compliance. That's the main reason. And the other thing is I don't understand why the one in front does count with a B3 and she doesn't count. Or we haven't been able to, how do you say, help her and do hers in a B3. That's the only issue that I have. Why does one have B3 and the other one doesn't?
Oh, is that a question?
Yeah.
They applied. Yeah, it's the existing zone. They applied. I don't know. Maybe, you know, at council, they gave it to them, but, you know...
Or something like that. Because either or, for example, if we, I'm thinking out loud, right? Like if we accept the B3, or I don't know if in time, or the B3, or the special use permit would come out at the same time, will she be able to meet the deadline that they're giving her? That's the only other issue that I think. If we go to a special use...
Conditional use.
A conditional use permit, it's not going to be there. But if we do help her and approve it, it still has to go to council and be approved. And maybe it won't get approved for that. So...
So the next council meeting is...
Second meeting in January.
Second week in January.
You see, that's the only main issue that I have with her. How can we help her if you've gotten her all the way up to here and we haven't resolved her issue?
The confusion here is that, well, the certificate of occupancy, that's basically what she needs. And she doesn't understand that she needs the B3 in order to get the certificate of occupancy. However, if that's not the case, where she can still get a certificate of occupancy through a conditional use permit, you still salvage the area, keeping it a B1. You allow her to operate her business as she sees fit. Because we do know, once you change the zoning to B3, you increase the intensity. If it's no longer that, she sells it, they can pretty much put whatever they want there.
If you decide for, if she decides to CUP, she's going to have to come back and start the process over.
Eso es lo único que también le afecta.
Yes.
That's why I said what I said.
So yeah. So it's up to the commission, but...
I also wasn't clear, or she's saying B3. I don't think she's also saying just CO. She's saying certificate of occupancy. She's saying, I need a B3.
To operate.
I think that's what she said was the request from the state for a dealership permit.
Well, I don't know if the state said that, but basically she's a B1. She's a B1. The type of business that she currently has requires a B3. Right, right. And so that's what they probably advise her at building.
Might be like a general recommendation, but it just wasn't extremely clear, in my opinion.
And just one more thing to consider for the commission is that staff does support this item, because if you look at it like bird's eye view, B3 does go with the area. There are other B3s all down the, up and down the street. And staff is saying they don't see a negative impact in the area. I think that traffic could become an issue once she opens up, maybe, you know, once there's more movement. It will only add to what's going on with the congestion there. But at that point, the traffic department could come in and help alleviate and do something about the narrow street. But as it stands now, I think the B3 actually fits with what's on that street. What's even right in front of her is another.
That's right.
Care to make a motion or...
Yes. Motion to approve. Second.
So you have a motion and a second to support staff recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6B. Public hearing recommendation of an ordinance of voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on a tract of land totaling 151.19 acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached Exhibit A, and known as the Annexation Track 1, Bastrop RM Investment Track, located north of 1472 and west of FM 3338. Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Shashi Maswani, Bastrop Bar Investments at LC, the engineer of record at Sherfi Engineering Company at LC. The proposed use is industrial, and the proposed issues zoning development is M1. Letter sent, 12, 0, against 0. General location. Street view. Notification map. Aerial view. Zoning map. Future land use. A draft of their proposed development, future development. And staff recommendations, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the initial zone. And the proposed motion.
The annexation that they're asking is because there is a line where it is not in city limits, right?
That is correct. This area, the 151 acres, is totally outside the city limits.
And it collides with the next one, with C, or no?
I'm sorry.
Does it collide with the one?
It continues. It has to be continuous, yes.
It has to be continued with...
That's correct.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estrado with Sherfi Engineering here to speak in favor of the proposed zone change and the annexation. And answer any questions if the commission has it.
Any questions for the engineer? Any questions for the engineer?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who would speak against this item? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, second. A second, all in favor? Against, motion carries. Moving on to item six C. Public hearing, recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one, light manufacturing district on a tract of land totaling point zero five nine eight acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract two, Paragon Group?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Juan Gabriel Gonzalez of Paragon Group LLC. The engineer of record is Premier Engineering. Proposed use is light industrial. The proposed initial zoning for this development is M one. Five letters were sent, four, zero, and against zero. General location? Street view? Notification map? Aerial view? Zoning map? Future land use? Copy of the survey? Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the proposed zoning. And the proposed motion?
Todos están pegados y no es de la ciudad, entonces lo necesitan anexar.
Anexar, that's it.
Para poderlo... Servicios y todo, lote por lotes.
Y voluntario.
Ah, y es voluntario.
Eh?
Es voluntario.
Es voluntario, okay.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who would speak in favor of this item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Second arise with Premier Engineering, representing the client. And we concur with the comments that the staff provide us. We are here to answer any question, may you have?
Any questions, engineer of record?
No.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I'm the neighbor and, uh...
Okay, should I come? Yes?
Good afternoon, I'm Steve my neighbor. I have been in front of, uh...
It's okay.
Something like this in my life.
Just your name, send your name to the record. Your name for the record, sir? Your name?
My name is Juan Ramirez.
Thank you.
And according to what I understand, what's described here, I think they're proposing like a, some kind of a generator or something like that to manufacture light? Is that, is that correct?
The zoning is for, the proposed zoning is M one, light industrial. That allows them to have multiple uses, but typically this area would be either warehousing or trucks.
Okay, well, there's already trucking there, right? The only thing is that, I don't know if it's gonna create more noise than what's there right now. Because I have a little pony parked here, and we have little kids that, you know, it's kind of like a therapy thing. And we can have something that's gonna be twenty-four seven on and never gonna turn out, then I see a problem, you know? It's because I think it's gonna, uh, we've come and made my rights.
Where is your property, is there an overlay?
Right next door.
Is there an overlay?
Under neighbor. And I mean, I didn't come the last time, because I did get one of these. I try to be a friendly neighbor and let's all just get along, but...
Basically, this is the process, just what they're trying to do is bring this parcel of land into the city, let me see, they can start getting services to this area. So in order to do that, they also need a designated zoning. So that's basically what they're doing, is the process of basically what they're doing here.
Okay, so then, uh, but...
Excuse me, before they put that, whatever they decide to do, they'll have to get with the building department, clear what it is, get with fire. I don't know what exactly it is that you're talking about, but they would have to get it reviewed before they...
That's the thing, I mean, I get this invitation here, which, thank you for letting me know. And I just, you know, I guess it's important for me to come, right? I mean, there's something going on there, next door neighbor. Something's gonna happen that I should be aware about. I'm still as confused right now as, you know. I still don't know what's going on there, or why would I get this invitation then if it's just something that...
It's...
You know, you know what I mean? I don't know if you can understand me, but why do I get this invitation? I mean, if something's gonna affect me that I have to get this invitation to come over here, right?
Right, so we are required to provide a notification to the surrounding landlords who live there. And I do believe you had mentioned you had gotten a card in the past for this.
Yeah.
So the card that you received in the past, the portion that's in the front, that fronts the highway, recently underwent the zone change process, and that was rezoned to M one, the front. So now this is just a little piece that they wanna bring into the city and make it with the same zoning as the front.
You can zoom it, right?
So the card that you got the last time was for the front.
Okay, so, so it's not gonna be like some kind of machinery to generate light or what?
No, so the name of light manufacturing allows for multiple uses, which could be transportation for our key warehousing.
But it doesn't mean light, like, like...
Generator.
Yeah, because that's another thing that I was thinking, you know, right now, I pretty much like it that there's not a lot of light. And now I'm thinking that once they get this, they're gonna put bright lights all over the place.
Light is like, it's like, um, not as heavy, not very intense.
Like, it won't be a factory.
Yeah, it won't be a factory, it's just...
Okay, well, that's, I just thought there was gonna be like a generator that was gonna be on twenty-four seven.
No, no, no.
Sir, could you...
Excuse my, uh, okay.
Could you let us know where your property is?
From there?
Can you see it?
I'm at the, I would say I'm on the left-hand side.
You can point to me.
I don't know, right next door, right next door.
Right there, that's your property, right there, right next door.
This one?
That one. The one right there, I think it would be this one.
Arriba, arriba, in the corner.
En seguida.
Let's do it.
Yes, thank you, thank you. This is a public hearing. If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second, Commissioner Casas, is all in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries. Moving on to item six D. Public hearing, recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one, light manufacturing district on a tract of land totaling eight point one five acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract three, Needmore Ranch Two Tract, located north of State Highway two fifty-five and west of F M fourteen seventy-two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Steve La Mandilla, Needmore Ranch Two Limited. The engineer of record is KCI Technologies. The proposed use is light industrial, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M one, light manufacturing. Three letters were sent out, zero four and zero against. General location? Street view? Notification map? Aerial view? Zoning map? Future land use? Survey of the area? Now, staff recommendation is that staff supports the annexation, and staff supports the initial zoning. And the proposed motion?
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jeff Glue with KCI Technologies, representing the applicant, and we are in support of the annexation.
Thank you.
You're answering the questions.
Any questions to engineer of record? Thank you. It's a public hearing, anyone who wish to speak against this item? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing and accept the staff recommendation.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Saffas, all in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries. Moving on to item six E. Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for voluntary annexation and initial zoning of R one, single-family residential district on a tract of land totaling two hundred eighty-nine point seventy-two acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as the annexation tract four, Kilim Cove Tract, located north of East Delmar Boulevard and east of Baba Leku.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Ratik Kilim the second, tract of land sales. The engineer of record is Seka Engineering LLC. The proposed use is residential, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is R one. Sixty-five letters were sent, zero four, zero, against zero. General location? Street view? Notification map? Aerial view? Future land use? Pardon me, zoning map? Future land use? And this is a draft of their proposed layout. It identifies a segment in red of what they're bringing into the city, over the request. And staff does recommend support of the annexation and supports the proposed zoning. And the proposed motion?
Thank you. It's a public hearing, anyone who speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Roland from Morales representing the applicant, and we are here in favor to support the annexation.
No questions?
For any questions?
Thank you.
Motion to close hearing.
Uh, ask, just, uh, anyone to speak against?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion to close hearing and support the annexation.
Second.
Second, my... All in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
I request to...
Yes.
Is Zach gonna make it all the way over you?
It might, it might.
Uh, moving on to item six F. Public hearing, recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one, light manufacturing district on a tract of land totaling thirteen point fifteen acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract J N H Rentals Tract, located south of State Highway three fifty-nine and east of Los Misiones Boulevard. Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Jesse J Martinez of J N H Rentals. The engineer of record is Crane Engineering Corporation. Proposed use is industrial, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M one. Seventy-four letters were sent, zero four and zero against. General location? Street view? Notification map? Aerial view? Zoning map? Future land use? Existing layout? And staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation. Staff does not support the proposed initial zoning of M one. Staff does not support the initial zoning of M one.
Only the annexation, not the zoning?
Not the zoning.
That's what I was gonna ask, because it has, it has the homes from one side.
Correct.
And the annexation is not only from the, from that side?
It's only from the, from the east side.
It's only from the east.
Right, from the east side. So this isn't an existing industrial site, though?
It's only from the east side.
You can see it here on the, on the area. It's the area, red shaded, red shaded red.
So our recommendation, uh, they have a legal nonconforming status at the moment? So they can continue to do their work. But if and when that A comes that they don't, then it would revert back to an underlining B three that would, in our opinion, would complement the homes of that one.
I have a question. Why, why is everything unplatted?
So this is an area that go, actually, this goes way back, I wanna say, to the seventies or some time. This is an area known by some people as Old Milwaukee West. And it is, it's part of what used to be an old unplatted colonia out in the county. So unfortunately, because of the plating status, it's also made it very difficult for them to acquire services. So they are actually right now undergoing the plating process. And so, part of this effort is to... Right, yeah, so part of this effort is to get it all into compliance.
All right, public hearing, a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name's Edward Gutsa with Crane Engineering. I'm here on behalf of J N H Rentals. This property really is, as staff has mentioned, has been in existence for almost forty years now. And the effort to try to bring it to current standards, we've been working for some time not to plat and zone these properties following the current land use. Developer is now planning to expand the current land use. He's planning just to bring it into legal conformance and maintain the existing conditions. The reason why the M one, I believe, is best for this location is because we have existing uses that correlate to light manufacturing. That would include a contractor's office, a communication cell phone tower, and oil and gas-related type services that have been there for thirty-plus years. I think my, from my experience, you know, one of the issues here when it comes to not supporting an M one to an R one is the buffering of those two zones. People always complain about developing that. This has been in existence, actually, this use was in existence prior to the residential being platted. So it was there before that, and then the residential came in and was platted, and builders built their homes, and people bought the houses. And they bought those houses knowing that there was an existing use of this light manufacturing when they purchased. However, the developer of this J N H has already installed a C M U fence all along the western boundary of that location, which basically serves as a buffer when we dealing with this type of variation in zone uses when you're trying to abut to a residential. And so those are the basis in which we are requesting an M one zone. We are trying to plat and bring this property into conformance. And so at this point, you know, we believe that M one is the best use for the property considering its existing condition. There are other M one zones in the area. We recently came before you to zone a piece of this property that was already in the city limits into an M one, which was approved by the commission and the city council earlier this year. And so we're just trying to continue that process to get this property to become, you know, to satisfy its best use in conformance with city code. So with that, I'll open the floor for any questions you might have.
Sorry, any questions, engineer of record?
My question, what happens if, to those existing businesses, if you do go to B three?
They're gonna not be in conformance, the communication, the cell tower, well, not conform, it has to be an M one. I checked the land use codes, the land use charts, I'm sorry. And you can, you can't have a tower in anything but an M one. Also reviewed some of the other land use charts, trying to see if maybe there was like a B three or a B four, and it doesn't allow that under that situation. We'd have to probably do an individual special use permit for a communication tower under a B four.
Does your client own the other unplanned property north of the zoned area?
Yes, sir, he owns all of that land altogether. We're just having to plat it in pieces and zone it in pieces because of how it was originally, it was originally annexed back in the day when the city was doing the colonial work all along three fifty-nine, and they annexed a thousand-foot strip of land. That's the reason why we're coming and taking care of it now on the rest of it.
You said you built, you built the wall all along the edge of the prisons?
Yes, sir, there's an existing C M U wall out there now. This is a, this is a very bad photograph of it. It totals as if we were breaking, we were leaving a prison site, but there is a C M U wall there along that western boundary. And then this exhibit also kind of gives you some perspective. All along this area here is where the C M U wall is already all the way from here, which is our southern boundary of the proposed annexation and plat. And it comes all the way up to this northern part, which is already platted and recorded adjacent to the residential. All that's already existing.
So staffs, staff's opinion on this?
So what's going on here is an annexation, right? Which, with the annexation comes an initial zoning. So the applicant is voluntarily annexing, and he would, he would like to have an M one as his initial. Now, we're asking for a B three, what does that mean? Well, if it comes in, that would be initial. He can come in and he can, he can go for a zone change later on down the road if he wanted to. One of the things that he was talking about, certain things that can put on that, because he's legal nonconforming, it would be up to the building department to determine whether the antenna and all those things can be put in there without having to worry about changing the zone because he is legal nonconforming. But our, our opinion is that the initial zone of B three would serve the area better than an M one for the whole, the whole property. Maybe potentially an overlay can come later. A conditional use permit can come later for the area. But to come in with a straight M one, we feel that's a little bit aggressive for the area, especially with all the rooftops. And I do understand, because I know his point completely, because we've had that happen before, where these people came in after the fact. But our... But our comprehensive plan still recommends that we go with a lighter zone. And B3 is more compliant to the comprehensive plan.
Are there any other questions for engineers? Thank you. Public hearing, anyone who speaks, even get for or against this item? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to go with staff recommendations.
Let's have approve, approve the annexation, but deny the zoning.
Mr. Chairman, would I can make a comment, please? Or you make any action?
I have instructions from my client that if an M1 is not approved tonight, that we request to table this item.
Okay. Appicants. We have a motion to table?
Yes.
Second? Second, Commissioner Arquero. All in favor? Against, motion carries.
Moving on to item six G. Public hearing recommendation of an ordinance for voluntary annexation initial zoning of M1 Light Manufacturing District on a tract of land totaling fifty-eight point thirty-three forty-five acres. More or less, as described by meets and bounds, the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract six, Clinical Mines Investment Two tract located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Vidal County Road.
Please, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is George M. Begelheimer, Clinical Mines Investments LLC. Engineer of record, Crane Engineering Company. Proposed use, light industrial. The proposed initial zoning for this development is M1 Light Manufacturing. Letter sent nine, four, zero, against zero. General location. Street view. Notification map. Aerial view. Zoning map. Future land use. Search of the property. Staff recommendation is staff supports annexation and initial zoning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who speak in favor or against? Sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to approve and support. That's coming.
We have a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Arquero.
I wanna make a motion. But I don't like to vote.
Favor? Favor of the motion?
Our favor.
On the favor? Against, motion carries.
You guys can, you can request jackets for the engineers and be like a race car driver with all the patches and.
Request some ponchos.
We're moving on to item six H. Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1 Light Manufacturing District on a tract of land totaling fifty point seventy-two acres. More or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract seven, USA TSM tract located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Pinto Aia Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Jeff Swain of USA TSM Incorporated. Engineer of record is Topside Civil Group. Proposed use is light industrial. And the proposed initial zoning for this development is M1. Letter sent seven, four, zero, against zero. General location. Street view. Notification map. Aerial view. Zoning map. Future land use. Sample or draft of their proposed layout, future layout. And staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation, and staff supports the proposed initial zoning.
Thank you, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak against or for this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, Topside Civil Group, here in support of both the annexation and the zone, and to enter any questions.
Any questions for the engineer of record? Yes, these are all annexations. Thank you. What sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to approve.
Close public hearing approved. A motion, Commissioner Goss. Second, Commissioner Goss, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I have an email to the applicant on item six, I have an email that the applicant requested to withdraw the item. May I have a motion to withdraw the item?
Motion to withdraw the item?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Against, motion carries.
Six J. Public hearing recommendation of an ordinance for voluntary annexation initial zoning of M1 Light Manufacturing District and B4 Highway Commercial District on a tract of land totaling three hundred and three point zero two acres. More or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract nine, Needmore Delotes tract located north of State Highway two fifty-five and east of FM fourteen seventy-two.
Please, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Steve Lamentia of Needmore Delotes LLC. The engineer of record is KCI Technologies. Proposed use is M1 Light Manufacturing and B4 Highway Commercial. And the proposed initial zoning is M1 and B4. Letter sent eight, four, zero, against zero. General location. Street view. Notification map. Aerial view. Zoning. Future land use. Draft of the future proposed layout. And staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed annexation. Staff supports the zoning of the area proposes M1. However, staff does not support the zoning for the area proposes B4.
This is a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jeff Quigg, KCI Technology, representing the applicant. And we support the annexation. The zone change that they, that we are asking for is simply a mixed use, but it's along the highway, so we put in for a B4. I believe that the, the planning department might be asking for a B3, but it is mixed use along the highway, so that's why we put in for B4.
That was my question.
So initially, they had come in that they wanted the whole property, M1, but we wanted to reserve some, some areas for some commercial businesses potentially along two fifty-five. So they accommodated with some B4 for the area.
But you're not supporting that.
Well, we, we asked for B3. And they just went to B4.
But.
Are you okay with that?
Are you okay with the B4?
We can live with it.
Can you live with that?
Yeah.
I mean, B4 is Highway Commercial District arterial, I mean, it's. So. I mean, if there's another reason, but.
We've, we've gone back and forth on this, this quite a bit, you know, and. So.
Why, why are your reasons?
I think what, we've had this discussion before. We understand that Columbia Bridge is gonna be a, a big bridge for M1. But we're, we're also concerned about the future of what it's gonna look like out there. Will there be areas for restaurants, tanks, strip centers, you know, for stores and stuff like that that are gonna service tourists, whether they're going southbound or northbound? If it's all gonna be M1, we won't get that. And when you look at what we have today in our M1, there are no services in there. It's all warehousing, and there's no foods, there's no anything. So none of the, the developments that are coming in with warehousing is, is thinking about services for the employees or anything like that. And my concern here was that, that if we, if we keep allowing M1 for the whole thing, it's gonna be all warehousing, there's not gonna be anything out there. Employees that work out there aren't gonna have a place to eat, a place to whatever, you know, the, the different things. So our concern in talking to the, the developer was to, to provide some B3 areas so that we could, we could have that for future, for future commercial along two fifty-five. So that's my concern, is, is if we don't do it, we're gonna have what we have now. And what we have now doesn't have anything but truck stops, no other services.
But, but the B4 is also appropriate.
But the B4 is also appropriate.
That's the question, B4.
Well, see, the B4, you can put warehouses, B3s you can, so by doing the B3.
It would still do like what they're doing.
It would, it would kind of secure more of a commercial design. B4, yes, you could, you could get commercial, but at the same time, if somebody wants to put a warehouse right there at the front.
Right.
They wouldn't have to come in for a zone, they'd just do it. That's where I, I favor more of a B3 to the area.
And, and our, and our position is just the flexibility of the land. It's a simple matter of flexibility. And, and our intent is to, to put in mixed use in that area to comply with what the wishes are. But if the area does develop and there is no interest in it, then there's no flexibility for us. And that's, that's the only reason, and it's highway, along the highway, so that's why we put B4. I mean, we, we understand, and like I said, we can live with the B3, but it just limits our flexibility down the, down the road. And my client doesn't really like that. Put it in the B4.
Do you be opposed to having one portion B3 and one portion B4?
No. If they, if they, we'd like to restrict one and leave one B4, leave one B3 and see how it goes. And, I mean, we can always come back and ask for a rezonate later, but yes, we have no objection to that either.
So even if we did B3 and they find a customer that wants a B4, they can always come back and, and reason. Once again, this is an annexation, wait, this is not, this is a master plan, right?
So the master plan's already been approved. And it's approved as all M1, but we're accommodating.
This would be our opportunity to get what we need out there. This is your time to, to consider the, the zones that you wanna put out there. Once those zones are applied, then it becomes the owner's right at that point. So.
I definitely see your, I definitely see your form. It's just that technically he is on highway, that's, that's my only hangup, is that technically what he's asking for.
Kind of doesn't make sense, we're gonna put non-highway commercial on the highway.
Yeah.
That's my thing.
I, I, I see both sides, but it's commission, so. Do you have any questions for? What sort of action would the commission like to take?
But it's motion to, okay? We're doing two things, right?
Correct.
The annexation, right? And?
Your recommendation for the zone.
Okay.
And he's also, well, I'll let you put your motion first.
Okay. As motion to approve the annexation. And. Not, not M1, but B3.
The area proposed for M1 would stay?
Will stay M1.
And the area?
And the area proposed for a B4.
So you recommend stop supports?
Stop, yes, stop recommendation for B3.
We're okay with that. Just wanted to make, you're about on the record that we wanted.
That you wanted B4.
When you come back with a zone change?
Yes.
All right, so we can live with that, we can live with that.
Thank you.
I will second, I will second that motion.
So is there an, is, is there?
A B4 and?
So just.
You're gonna recommend an aisle of the B4?
Yes, and recommend B3.
And approval of a B3.
Yes, approval of B3.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Arquero. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're now moving on to review and consideration of the following master plans. Item seven A, review and consideration of the Needmore Delotes tract four industrial subdivision master plan. The tent is industrial.
Mr. Chairman. In speaking on this item, could I ask the commission if they would consider bringing up nine A? This is, I don't know if you, if you recall, Mr. Quigg and Mr. Villarreal came up here together.
No, we recall.
And so we'd like to bring them both together so we can make decisions on both cases.
May I have a motion to?
Is it seven A and nine A?
No, just nine A.
Just nine A, because I opened up seven A, but can, can I have a motion to also bring up, open up nine A?
Motion to open up nine A.
Second. Seven A.
Second.
Seven A and nine A.
Seven A already.
Yeah, seven A is already.
No, already done.
And eighty?
Yeah, nine A, second by Commissioner Arquero. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I'll read nine A into record. Preliminary reconsideration of the Platte of Wisdom Industrial Park and granting of a variance. Wait. Correct? Yes, granting of a variance of a dead end from the five hundred feet threshold to one thousand ten feet in length. Tent is industrial purpose, the reconsideration is to reconfigure lots.
Correct, and this is the master plan for Needmore.
Okay.
For the record, applicant is Needmore Ranch, engineers KCI Technologies. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this seven lot development is not applicable as this, as this tract is located within the ETJ. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Fire. Parks and leisure. And the proposal.
Just for the record, since there's an underlying preliminary approval, I believe our plat has to be approved first before the master plan.
In your, which I may.
Which is nine A.
Nine A.
Yeah.
Yeah. Subject to the changes.
Yes.
So I think nine A needs to be read first. And in that way, it'll.
She just read.
Yeah, sure.
She just read nine A. Go to nine A. Oh, go to nine A. Got it. But she, she just read nine A.
She just read, I don't know, she read seven A.
So for the record, applicant is North Laredo Industrial Park. Engineer is Topside Civil Group. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this five lot development is M1. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, representing the owner. So just to revisit everything, kind of catch up. Our, this is a preliminary reconsideration of our original, or second plat, preliminary plat. The previous approval had a street just going from two fifty-five to north, to our north boundary line. After discussions with Jeff's team and, and, and the landowner that he represents, as well as the city and Tech dot, we came up with a plan to where we're gonna limit the, the through traffic for the future development up north. We are gonna provide an access, if, here, let me put it on here. I can point at it.
Jeff can use his.
No, he'll never use his.
No. So. Right, and Jeff can show the master plan if you like, but, so this road, as it is approved right now, went all the way to the northern boundary line. To avoid that through traffic like the staff and Tech dot would like, we provided a reserve strip here so that our western neighbors can, when they plat, they come and tie in here. And it avoids, mainly it avoids, excuse me, it avoids two connection points to two fifty-five. So that's the first, the first one. And the second one is, it's, there would only be local traffic that'll be accessing two fifty-five here. So you wouldn't have that through traffic and people kind of cutting in like we've seen at the World Trade Bridge. There is a key to this, it's, there is a variance since this, since we had to stop this street. Um, there is a key to this, it's, um, there is a variance since this, uh, since we had to stop this street short. Um, the variance on the cul-de-sacs were five hundred feet, this is double. Why do you see that in industrial, you're probably gonna see a lot of variances for cul-de-sacs? Just the size of the lots when you require two access points because of a warehouse size. Um, five hundred feet isn't enough frontage to have two access points, so you have to kind of extend the roads a little bit. The second thing is, we did speak with Tech dot, kind of hoping they were here, but they're not. Um, about. You know, we did receive something at five thirty, that's why I was a little late. Um, that, uh, this is just for the record, just to show on here. Tech dot is in agreement with, uh, one access shown on the attached layout. Um, they're actually responding to Jeff's email, which is the master plan that shows an incorporation of ours and his. The reason mine's going first is because mine needs to switch to the new layout so that you can approve his tying point. That's pretty much it, this one's easy.
Yeah.
I have a question. Originally, you had a cul-de-sac, correct?
I'm sorry?
You originally, you had a cul-de-sac.
I originally had a cul-de-sac, yes.
Built the road all the way.
Yes.
And that impacts mustard, and now you're back.
Yes.
Just checking, thanks.
And yes, we did have a, a phone conversation with Tech dot today, they called our office and we, we discussed this.
Okay, okay.
See, we can all get along.
Mentioning.
Oiga, Mister Dominguez. Not, they're not gonna have any issue coming in and out, like for security reasons or emergency reasons with you?
Well, what, what the code requires is that once they develop, let's say, uh, a section, they put a building, depending on the size of the building, you would need two points onto the property itself, but that's why he's asking for the longer road.
Okay.
So that's to, he's doing that to accommodate what we're eventually gonna require. Yes.
But you don't need the two exits from, from the complex.
That from residential.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
Are there any other questions for the engineer? Good question, good question, all good questions, if not, what sort of action the commission like to take? We're moving on.
Motion to approve.
Nine A.
Nine A, subject to comments.
Your motion?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Portillo.
Uh, the variance is also approved, correct?
With the variance.
With the variance.
Yes.
Motion to approve, subject to comments with variance.
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Salas and a second by Commissioner Portillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Motion to abstain.
No, motion abstention, motion carries. And now, uh, we're going to seven eight.
Jeff Quigg, KCI Technologies, representing the applicant, uh, Chairman, Commissioner.
Huh?
Now the main feature.
Now the main feature, no, the match plan. So, I guess we can get to the actual master plan on the screen.
The other way.
So, as, as you can see, uh, we're gonna be working with our neighbor to provide access, um, and to limit, uh, north, um, access to the two fifty-five. And with it, we will also be coming in when we go through plating for the variance on the length. Because, because as you can see, we swing out and then we come up even further, and that, that further limits, um, any access to the north. Uh, we own a, a property strip that's sixty feet along the top, which also again limits, uh, any further access. And we're working, we're with our neighbors to, to potentially purchase and some arrangements between us and them that'll work out for the benefit of both of us. We would like to get your consideration on the master plan.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, what sort of action the commission like to take?
Motion to approve. Subject to comment.
We have a motion by Commissioner Salas.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Casadis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item eight A, preliminary consideration of the Platte of Needmore Delotes Track Four Industrial Subdivision Phase One, the tent is industrial.
Yes, Mister Chairman, for the record, applicant is Needmore Ranch. Engineer is KCI, proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this lot is not applicable as this track is located within the ETJ. Location view. Area view. Street view. Comments from planning, fire, parks and leisure, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Once again, Mister Chairman, members of the commission, Jeff Quigg, KCI Technologies, representing the applicant, and we do support staff comments on that.
There's no questions or comments from, to staff with engineer, what sort of, uh?
No.
Action?
Motion to approve, subject to comment.
A motion by Commissioner Salas, that's second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Portillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item eight B. Preliminary consideration of the Herrera plat, the tent is commercial.
Yes, Mister Chairman, for the record, applicant is Elia Herrera, engineer is South Texas Testing Laboratories. Proposed use is commercial, the zoning for this one lot development is B four. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is the engineer applicant? No, he's not.
An isle engineer?
No, he had a engineer. Wait. What would the commission want, is the commission want to do on this one, since there's no one present?
Well, I have a question for staff.
Okay.
Um, do we know what facility would be?
Be there, sure.
So South Texas Testing Laboratories?
South Texas, uh, testing is the, the, the name of the engineering firm.
Oh, okay.
No email communication, nothing?
No.
It's up to the commission, so commission, uh, whatever you want. So your motion?
Motion to table.
Time served.
Time served.
You have a motion, table, time served, by Commissioner Salas?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Portillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
For, for the record, our notes, uh, we did call, and my notes say that they confirmed to be here, so.
Okay. Item eight C. Preliminary consideration of the Platte of the Coves, Edmond Field, Phase Six C, the tent is residential.
Yes, Mister Chairman, for the record, applicant is Columbus Development, engineer is Mesquite Engineering. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this ninety, ninety-eight lot development is R one. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, fire, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is the engineer or applicant?
Mister Chairman, uh, for, for the record, Rolson Morales, uh, representing Mesquite Engineering, uh, we would like to table this item.
Okay, time served or?
Time served.
Time served?
Yes.
Motion to table, time served.
Motion by Commissioner Portillo and a second by Commissioner Salas, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's, well, we're already started, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We have a recommendation to, uh, table item eight D, may I have a motion to table time, um, item, item eight D, time served? Uh, second, second by Commissioner Arkel, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item eight E. Preliminary consideration of the Platte of Lot fourteen, Block eight, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase fifteen, the tent is commercial.
Tengo una observación.
Yes.
Uh, E and F, son iguales. Nomás es un Lot fourteen and Lot four eight.
They're blocks?
But they're different lots.
Well, we still gotta do them individually.
You can't take them together?
You can if you want, uh, but either way, your vote would have to be individual.
Individual.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Oh, have I, have I read that one to you?
No.
Can I even read, I got, I don't know.
I'll just, for the record, um, applicant is D and J, Alexander Investment, engineer is Premier Engineering. Proposed is commercial, the zoning for this one lot development is B three. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Is the engineer, the record?
Hello, Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Cristina Gutierrez with Sergio Nariz, on behalf of Premier Engineering. Um, we're here representing the applicant, the D and J Alexander, um, if there are any questions, we agree with the comments from planning.
You concur with the comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Are there any questions for the applicant, engineer?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What sort of action the commission like to take?
Yeah, ah, no. Motion to. Motion to approve, subject to comments.
We have a motion to approve, subject to comments by Commissioner Salas, second by Commissioner Casadis, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item eight F, preliminary consideration of the Platte of Lot four A, Block two, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase fifteen, the tent is commercial.
For the record, applicant is D and J, Alexander Investment, engineer is Premier Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is B three. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat. Comments on planning, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is the engineer? Is this your second time here? Is this your second time?
Um, with Premier, uh, we concur with comments. If you have any questions.
The intro, your name, your name, they're excited. Um, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What sort of action the commission like to take?
Motion to approve, subject to comment. Taken.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Salas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to item eight G. Preliminary consideration of replat of Lot sixteen and Lot seventeen, Block two, Laredo Town Center, Phase two, into Lot sixteen A, Lot sixteen B, Lot sixteen B and seven, Lot seventeen A, and Lot seventeen B, Block two, Laredo Town Center, Phase two.
Yes, Mister Chairman, for the record, applicant is A A R T I. Engineer is Sherfy Engineering Company, proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this six lot development is B four. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat and the replat. Comments from planning, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is the engineer?
Good evening, good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the commission, Frank Estrela with Sherfy Engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
That's it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, engineer? Now, what sort of action the commission like to take?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, second by Commissioner Arkel, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item eight H. Preliminary consideration of Lomas del Sur Subdivision, Unit twenty-two. The tent is commercial.
Yes, Mister Chairman, for the record, applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings, engineer is Sherfy Engineering. The proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is R one A. Location view. Area view. Comments from planning, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Frank Estrela, Sherfy Engineering, we concur with staff comments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, subject to comments.
Comments.
Second by Commissioner Arkel, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to reconsideration of the following, following preliminary plats and preliminary replats, item nine B. Preliminary reconsideration of the Platte of SKG Columbia Industrial Park South and the granting of a variance of a dead end street from the five hundred foot threshold to one thousand five hundred fifty point eighty-six feet in length. The tent is industrial, the purpose of those reconsiderations is to reconfigure lots.
Yes, Mister Chairman, for the record, applicant is SKG Columbia South. Engineer is Bell One Consulting, proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this six lot development is M one. Location view. Area view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, fire, and the proposed motion.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Chairman, missionaries, staff, uh, here, uh, to represent SKG Columbia South, uh, Oscar Castillo from Bell One Consulting. Uh, and we're requesting the variance for the cul-de-sac mainly because it has an industrial side, I think it's something very common because of the size of the lots. And, uh, here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the engineer?
Este, este es el que está pegado al, a los de, el cul-de-sac que acaban de presentar?
No, este está al sur.
Este es del otro lado, eh?
Así es. Este se conecta a, a este, this connects to Mines Road.
To Mines Road, right? Okay. And, and you're requesting a variance?
I'm requesting a variance for the length of the.
Dead end.
The length.
Same reason.
For the same reason.
Si, right.
Perfect.
What sort of action the commission like to take?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the variance.
The variance.
Okay.
Second.
By Commissioner Arkel, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We're now moving to the consideration of the following final plats and final replats.
She's been waiting all night for this.
If there's no, if there's no objection from staff or from commission, may I have a, a motion to hear items ten A, ten B, ten C, and eleven A together?
I'm making a motion to read items ten A, ten B, and ten C together.
Any eleven?
Any eleven A.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Arkel, second, Commissioner Casadis, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. May I have a motion? Yeah, may I have a, a motion to, of action on items ten A, ten B, ten C, and eleven A?
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Arkel, and a second by Commissioner Salas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, can we now read those into record?
Yes, sir, for the record, um, final consideration of the Platte of SKG Columbia Industrial Park North. Final consideration of the Platte of Pinnacle Industry Center FM fourteen seventy-two, Unit thirteen, approved. Final consideration of the Platte of San Pedro, San, uh, San Pedro Ranch, Phase one, Unit one, approved. Final reconsideration of the replat of lots nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, Block six, Inter-American Distribution Park, Phase four, into lots, Lot nineteen A and Lot twenty-one A, Block six, Inter-American Distribution Park, Phase four, approved. Uh, those are the final plats, uh, right for the record.
Thank you. Are there any directors' comments?
Yes, Mister Chairman, um, our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-first of December. Um, we would like to know if we would have quorum, uh, we do have some items coming up, but we have to post tomorrow for that meeting. If we're not gonna go to quorum, we'd like to know so that we can, for zones.
Oh.
For zones. So, um, I don't know if, if everybody can make it, but we'd like to really know if you can make the twenty-first.
Call the commission and see who can, who can attend, I guess, by the reason.
The twenty-first, you're supposed to.
You can be here?
You're tentative?
Tendentive.
One, two, three, four, five, so you have five for sure at least right now.
Okay, okay. We do, we do have, we do have some, we have somebody flying in from Dallas and.
So, yeah, so we only do have the twenty-first of December not happening.
You want me to not be here? I cannot be here if you don't want me to be here.
As of right now, we have five, but I mean, if, I mean, you know, we'll be checking with everybody.
If anything changes, we'll advise you.
Yes, please.
Any, any other?
No, that's the importance of the meeting.
All right, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.